All right, let's call this meeting to a close.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of board meeting minutes for May twenty first and twenty four.
I'll move for the approval of board meeting minutes.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of meeting agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the meeting agenda.
Well, second.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Are there changes?
Are there any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda.
A second. Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Who seconded? I think you're sorry. Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have anybody for public comment? Anyone? Unfinished business, we have approval of the twenty four, twenty five school calendar with late starts.
We just have the bargain late start dates that we're adding into the calendar. They're attached.
I thought maybe it would open when I got in here, they're not, those dates are not opening on our link. I couldn't look at it earlier either.
Is it that's right?
Well, I would think so, but I can't.
It's the same number of late starts we had this year. And most of the dates coincide with the dates that we had for late starts this year.
We're looking at use. September sixteenth, October twenty eighth, November twenty fifth. Um, January sixth, February tenth, March third. Uh, none in April, May fifth, and then that June second.
I'll move for the approval of the. I should say the right thing. The twenty twenty four, twenty four, twenty five school calendar with late starts.
I'll second.
And there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion or any further discussion?
My only discussion is I have. I've several families reach out and share. Concern that. Just not a huge fan of the late start versus. Earlier release that staffed up on a clarity view, so just is a. A point of conversation to at least maybe. Continue to consider.
I think that came up internally within our own admin team on how can we bring alignment, we actually do with the busing force out of. Very, so it's a kind of creates a burden upon our own side, but it does take us, since it's a bargain day, um, we, we, we did have a vested interest in. Addressing this, but it would have to be a route, so I think we had to note on that we'd like to address it in the years to come. Also, it's kind of generally, general practice is to avoid a. A Monday late start or a Friday early release. Cause it almost inherently turns it into a three day weekend each time. So how can we bring something into alignment if what our peers and neighbors are?
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. New business approval of Lady Eagles. What's the FC boosters?
Is it, is that fall chair?
Fall chair, is that fall chair boosters? Say it again? Soccer? Do we know who, do we have someone here in the? Or is there somebody in the? Oh, Sarah, is Sarah here Valentine? Or Evan? Do we need to have them talk about anything? I don't hear for discussions, maybe I don't think that we have. That was pretty well laid out.
Questions, I can't read the bottom, it says Chris, something to Evan regarding.
Spoke spoke to Evan regarding.
Is it insurance related?
Probably, I think that's the only conversation.
Cover insurance in the works of getting COY.
Yeah, I think making sure he has a COY. He's in the process, probably a note that he's in the process to getting his COY to have it insured under the booster program.
Can we, can you remind me or refresh my memories, so boosters, if they are to hold a fundraiser on. School grounds, they have to have liability insurance.
Event, is it right, so if it's a booster event, they would have to have their own insurance, if it's our event, we would have to have insurance. So, and, and that starts muddying the. Water, right, because if it started, becomes an home school district event, home school district students, then it needs to become an ASB event.
Right.
So that, that use of our insurance makes it a district event, which makes it need to be an ASB event.
So. The car wash, they don't have to have insurance.
That's between them and that organization, you know.
Yeah, okay.
You know, wherever their place get car wash, that's not. That's not our. As I should say, not our circus, not our monkeys, right, I mean, it's. Somewhere else, it's when it's at our event, our district event, using our facilities, that our insurance doesn't extend to something that is not our.
So, let me throw out there, um, a lot of the groups do. Raffles, raffle ticket sales. And they sell at. Function of the school. Do they have to have liability insurance for that?
If they're not doing an event, I don't believe so, we say you have to refresh my memory, I think like when you're looking at a soccer camp where the kids out there are playing, they're engaging, they're kicking a ball, like it's a soccer event. We need to have the COY insurance, when you're just selling a ticket, that's different.
Okay, yeah, just wanted clarification on that, cause I'd actually got that question earlier today, I'm like.
Conversation came up with the track booster fundraiser as well, like pulling the track camp, like who's insurance, who's insuring this track camp?
Okay, thank you. I'll move. Do you have a motion?
Nope, we don't.
I'll move the approval of Lady Eagles FC booster fundraisers.
Well, second. Then a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, approval of donation of seven hundred fifty from the bond company for FB LA.
I'll move for the approval of. Nation of seven fifty from bonds company for FB LA.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
My only question on this is, isn't our new policy? Say that we don't have to approve. Small amounts.
Do we have it approved yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just have a second reading.
Yeah, I just was curious, I didn't know, I, I was waiting for you to tell me something like, uh. You know, I had to do with.
Fine, then we're not approving it, move on now. Okay, I guess just because we're here, let's just go finish it out. Alrighty. Alright, there's been a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you again bond company for. Always being in support of our youth.
Uh, approval of school improvement plan for M Elementary, Mr. Schmuggen's.
Alma Elementary Plan is attached, I have it, I, we're, we're getting ready to close the year. Um, we, some of the major needs that we're addressing is, is a thirty percent of our students behind benchmark and reading, eighty five percent of our kindergarteners show up behind benchmark. We do have a large gap between our D L L students closing on those gaps, so. One of the biggest things that we've been working on is that kind of identifying of standards and that for literacy instruction. As a result, moving forward on having all of our ELA, our teachers Psyop trained, Psyop training is scheduled for. Into the next week.
Monday, Tuesday, well, seventeenth, eighteenth to twentieth.
Yeah, seventeenth, eightheenth, twentieth, so we're moving forward on a Psyop training, to ensure that all our teachers are Psyop trained, and then we're also moving forward on a UDL model. Um, actually brought up, kind of celebrated, I was gonna say my super general report, but actually have our K one two badge books are all made with our new activity books. Heather Moore led this project, but actually being able to identify the core academic standards, then spending our train, our summer working on UDL, universal by, universal design learning, training. On how to accommodate our special needs students in the core instruction and reducing how much pullout time. So, uh, we do think, um. We see the eighty five percent kindergarten students below benchmark kind of being an existing problem, so, uh, we really are wanting to put forward in a plan. Building better really, uh, better partnerships with our early learning providers, but. Right now, we were able to turn that, we finished about the year with, begin the year with eighty five percent of our students behind standard, just here with eighty three percent to standard. So we do have a good system to flip that within the kindergarten range, but we would definitely like to move to an area where it's not need this much accommodation. Any questions on, uh? The elementary school improvement plan?
Uh, yeah, I'll move for the approval of the, uh, school improvement plan for Alma Elementary.
I'll second.
Then a motion made and seconded. There any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of school improvement plan for the Alma Middle School.
Do you have, I got it right here, you want me to kind of go from the topic? Um, this home is, uh, even though she's right here, is working on closing a web and link crew group when it's the high school, so talk about that. We have substantial fall off in academic scores when students enter sixth grade and when students move to ninth grade. And that's become a deep point of concern for us, um, when, so this home has been working on the building and construction of a web group program. For eighth grade, next year's eighth graders will be taking our mentorship of sixth graders to kind of ease on that transition point. And then also building a sense of belonging, I actually spent the last few weeks, four weeks, five weeks, working on web crew mentor training. Where our eighth graders are getting trained in how to become mentors for that sixth grade group. Um, that's an important part, especially because we've fallen the bottom twenty percentile of students feeling like they have a sense of belonging at both our middle school and our high school. So we do feel that we need to take a targeted effort on how we're bringing our students in. Goal two is, any questions on goal one? Goal two, toss anything you'd like to. Um, we've been working through the alignment of our assessment tools and adoption of our assessment tools. So, um, we currently are using iReady as our constant assessment tool, so we're just working on making sure that we have. Working with teachers on how to use data and how to identify student gaps within data. And then how to embed that work within the, um, late start times, now we're beginning to use diagnostic data to. Amend, adapt, and our core instruction, so not just, this is the traditional model, but. Uh, adjusting, uh, we are moving into a model where we're really focusing next year on core instruction. Uh, when you feel that our core and star time and our emphasis on core instruction really needs to be our priority, especially with the adoption of new instructional materials. As we think that, we feel that through the school improvement plan, especially with our academic scores falling off in the middle school. That next year's priority is, is we will have our assessment data, we're gonna have our brand new instructional materials adoption coming into place. So now we have a set content, six through twelve. As that content falls into place, we need to be moving to phase two with our teachers on if students are not being benchmarked, how are you accommodating? Are you just moving class along and leaving students behind, are you having students sitting there waiting, so having our teachers really understand the data and those accommodations?
Perfect. I think it's only fair since I have it right here in front of me.
And then the next, the last one is just working, moving forward is still on our, uh, academic and English ELA, uh, our ELA fluency through more against Psyop training. And we did assessments and using our we just course. So I think to kind of get all those in place, we've had a full, whole docket of work between web crew training, link crew training. We just, Mark, Eric and I, we're working on, Katie, we're working on our finalizing the summer strategic training, retraining our teachers on all their new instructional materials. And the new Psyop training, so we do have all the trainings and progress in place now. So that's, that is the middle school.
I'll move for the approval of the middle school improvement.
I'll second. Some motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, school improvement, approval of school improvement plan for the Alma High School.
Much like web crew, high schools can be focused on link crew. Which is the same level of mentorship, but it's juniors and seniors mentoring ninth graders as ninth graders coming in. So both the high school has been going through that link crew mentorship training, as the middle school has been going through web group training. So that's our. You know, both closer goal improvement plans are pretty much identical. Um, the second goal is sec, using our district data and working through that implementation of our new instructional materials. And then moving forward into a whole trip using data for accommodations within our late start days, now that we have core content to begin working with our students. Then same thing on goal number three is using our weighted data and working on our, our fluency data and continuing to work through our side after. So, it's the, the two strategic plans, pretty, it's all improvement plans, um. Of the same, really focusing on student transitions, making sure our students all feel like they have a place, they're all welcome. Uh, hoping to kind of. Resolve that tension students are having as they're transitioning, and then also ensuring that we have our new materials coming into place.
I'll move the approval of school improvement plan for Alma High School.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded. There any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I discussion approval of policy thirty two ten non discrimination, first reading.
Uh, this is just adopting the initial language and updating the references.
I'm afraid the approval of policy thirty two ten, non, just non discrimination, first reading.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of policy fifty three ten compensation, first reading.
Move for the approval of policy fifty three ten compensation, first reading.
I'll second.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, discussion approval of policy fifty five ten retirement program.
For the approval of policy fifty five ten retirement programs, first reading.
I'll second.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Hey, approval of fifty two, fifty twenty staff development, first reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy fifty five twenty staff development, first reading.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, discussion approval of policy fifty six ten substitute employment, first reading.
The approval of policy fifty six ten substitute employment, first reading. I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, discussion approval of policy fifty six twelve, temporary administrators, first reading.
Move for the approval of policy fifty six twelve temporary administrators, first reading.
I'll second.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, discussion approval of policy fifty six thirty volunteers, first reading.
Updates the control batch of checks. For volunteers.
I'll move for the approval of policy fifty six thirty volunteers, first reading.
Second.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, discussion approval of policy fifty six forty two administrative internships, first reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy fifty six forty two administrative internships, first reading.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, approval of classified employee reduction plan.
In, um. In. April, beginning of May, the board adopted a reduction in force notification on how we would bring our budget into alignment. Um, some of the things that are going to be affecting us district wide is property values had about a four point eight percent property value reduction. Which took our levy down by two hundred seventy three dollar, two hundred seventy three thousand, one hundred twenty three dollars. So just shy of three hundred thousand dollars is how much we've reduced our local levy draw. Also, we've lost our federal COVID relief funds, so as a result, we are needing to figure out how to operate with seven hundred fifty thousand dollars less revenue annually. So the district is looking at ways to move forward, we do have a healthy fund balance, but again, you don't budget off, uh, what is in your fund balance, you budget off of your revenues. Just like you wouldn't finance a car off of what's in your, you wouldn't finance a twenty thousand dollar car off of having two thousand dollars in your savings account. You would finance a car based upon what your monthly income is, and that's what any kind of pragmatic introduction to financial management would do. Um, so it's very basic financial literacy concept, uh, you need to make sure you have enough money coming in each month to pay your bills. So we adopted a fiscal reduction plan to account for the loss of two hundred seventy three thousand dollars out of our levy and the close of S R to the tune of about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. What we realized is, is we needed to have a way to reduce our plan to also improve academic performance, and I want to show this, this is kind of the early look at our state assessment scores. Um, this is all our, um. Math score. And as we're looking at our math score, then notice that we have a third grade, this is to that last year, this is this year. First line, so fourth grade last year, next line, this year, can you see that, it's kind of small? Eric, do you mind, uh?
I think where we, where we really get concerning is if you can look at this, um, there you go, thank you, Eric, I appreciate it. When you begin looking at this, um, fifth grade, two thousand twenty three, I want you to notice this fifth grade year. In this fourth grade, this year outperformed fifth grade last year, but that's this year. Last year's best performance was fifth grade, best performance in math was fifth grade. The two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three best performance in the district in math was our fifth grade class. When you roll down to sixth grade, two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four, same kids right here, our lowest academic achievement in the district. So same kids. Last year were the absolute best performing performers in the district. Next year, new building, same kids, lowest performers in the district. That's a problem, that is a big problem for us. When we look at our academic achievement support plan, let's go look at ELA. This is Washington, this is Alma School District, so this is Washington State, you'll see Washington State. Go back up here, we'll see Washington State kind of takes a similar drop, but not a big drop by about four percent. So we're very far off of state average. When I look at Washington State ELA, I move up to ELA. Same deal, fifth grade. Last year. Sixth grade, we, we fall, but not as, not as solid. We realize that if we're going to deliver academic intervention, we needed a cost effective way to deliver intervention. So when we look at prices, uh, what we're paying for student support specialists, we're about thirteen point seven percent away. From what it would cost to have a teacher. So when we see that a, you know, if, if we were to take that pay up by thirteen point seven, and we see the rationality of have a certified teacher. It just makes more sense to just have a certified teacher. To deliver that intervention. The benefit of that now is, is with our mastery based learning, we have every standard mapped out, it's the benefit of our badge books, it's the benefit of our empower learning management system, we have academic standards mapped out across the board. So by having a certified teacher who can look at the standards, those teachers can pull students out, deliver intervention, design instruction for intervention. Grade intervention. Teachers come in with their certifications, as a district, we're not being asked to pay for their certification, because they're already certified. We're not being asked to cover their credential, because they already have it. So to have somebody who shows up with all the necessary paperwork. For close to the same price, who can deliver a better intervention, it makes more sense to just have teachers when we're paying the price for a teacher. We're paying, covering the cost of an employee and a cost, a teacher, it makes more sense to just have teachers to address this glaring intervention problem that we need to respond. So our reduction would call for the reduction of. Uh, to another side, student support specialist and replace it with a certified ELA teacher and a certified math teacher delivering intervention services. That's the secondary reduction. Any questions on that?
Will you? Those are only secondary positions we're talking.
That's the first round, we have a second, another round of elementary level positions. We're looking at a reduction of a total of eight, but that eight would generate. Three certified employees and one classified employee working on and supporting our D L L support. Which you see within the student, uh, student, the school improvement plans that we need to target our D L L support. The elementary would be, since we're moving to a standards based, student agency based model, where students have their certificate, uh, they're working on their own certifications. The plan would be moving to a certified math teacher delivering that intervention as part of a pullout, working on project based math assignments, so students are looking at using math in the real world. We already have reading lab specialists, but we have not staffed a math lab specialist at the elementary, and it's looking at restructuring, so we have that math lab specialist. Really putting an emphasis on putting our math sports up. We feel strongly that a program redesign is like this, where we have certified teachers delivering intervention is in the best interest of our students. And when we can do it for. A lower cost, we think it's a much more efficient way to be do what's best for students.
I know it says it in here, but for those listening. The, where it talks about shifting the cost of the cost, you know, multiple benefit packages to one certificated benefit package. It may not make sense why, that's why it saves money and that might not be something.
Benefit package costs twenty eight thousand dollars, twenty eight. Twenty eight thousand dollars. So in in Washington State, after working six hundred hours, an employee gets a twenty eight thousand dollar benefit package. So as a result, it behooves us to have more full time employees. And the beauty of moving to certified teachers is certified teachers, they're non hourly. So even though the cost point is pretty even, the certified teacher, they also write papers in the evening, do assessments. None of that is hourly or overla, overtime work. That is all part of contract. So by having one employee who can work longer in the day, and it's just generally a part of their contract, makes the position far more cost effective.
I know you had shared that with us, but I don't know if people at large can know that piece of information.
It's, it's, it's better for our students. You have somebody who's trained, certified, has passed a praxis exam in math and in English. Who can work with our teachers as peers on helping developing intervention, working on pullout. And and it just really leans into our plan on having a redesign on how we are delivering lab, uh, learning assistant program services to our students, which really needs to be certified teachers at the core. And when we, like I said, and I've said it many times, but when we can do those interventions at a lower cost. It just makes more sense.
I'll move for the approval of classified employee reduction plan.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I just wanted to say real quick, Chris, that I appreciate the work that went into this with the end goal of the betterment of the students.
Yeah, the the top priority is what's for the best of our students. I mean, I understand that we are talking about people's positions. We want to be sympathetic to that. But we really have to have a priority. We can see that we have a mass drop off at Alma Middle School. You know it, our community knows it, everybody knows there's a mass drop off. I think we would be negligent. Almost criminally to continue to ignore that. Now we've done an instructional materials adoption, we've done the work to focus on that core. But to not, to have an intervention program where we don't have certified teachers delivering that intervention, I feel that. You know, you know, it's the definition of insanity, doing the same thing and expecting a different result. It is time to look at a different model.
Good plan.
Thank you. I think it is, it is worth noting though, because like you said, these are real positions and these are real people who have, you know, in various capacities served. Some of our, you know, most at risk students and worked really hard in a lot of heart and compassion and passion to make gains. Still not adequately because for maybe a multitude of other reasons, but. I just like to note that it is not gone unnoticed. That there has been a hard effort to try to make those gains from those positions. So. Thank you too, it impacts.
Okay. Uh, approval of donation of covered statements.
Um, we are still working through our contract, but I think, Lilleni, we are close.
Yeah, we were, we met. Couple days ago and we were able to talk about. More of the legal side of things and get some more numbers. We did get this stuff from Vector, but it's not what is needed. And so we'll have to go back to them and figure that out. So once that's done, then we'll be able to move forward with a. Legal contract that are.
But I think we're down to just some small details at this point, right?
Yes.
Um, we did put out a press release, the, the event to help raise funds for the covered stands is June twenty second, six P M. Is it formal or not formal?
It's, I love for it to be formal, but a lot of people come in haggery, so whatever you want.
Let's do the best we can. Uh, I mean, Mark and I will be coordinating our outfits like normal. This is actually not planned, but it happens more often than not. But we're just so appreciative. I do think we're kind of reaching a point. I know that I will be out of the area at the next board meeting. So if there is something that we'll try to have. Questions answered before.
Yeah. I also will be out of the area.
We might have a little issue because I'll be on another aisle. For the next board meeting. So I think Ryan will be here. Will you be here?
Yes, I will.
I'm sure I'll be.
I'll make sure Ryan will be there.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Lilleni, you guys looking for, what are you looking specifically for a site plan out there?
Um, there's no topography.
Yeah.
None, so we have that first.
Okay.
But, um, it's a really big deal. I'm not probably able to fit it too quickly.
We appreciate the work that's going into that sentence. I'll be emotional, but it's honorable and it's humbling.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it's. It has been a journey and this is an incredible. Provision that we would have never seen out of. Any place, but it is. A, a thank you does not begin to capture where we're at.
I keep going to, what are the chances?
I know. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, do we need a motion?
Um, we don't have a, kind of, that's probably going to be sit standing on our board agendas while we're going back and forth. Now, if we're able to get a point.
Okay, so you just move, move to table.
Move to table it?
Yeah.
Okay.
To the table of the approval of the donation of the cover stance.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
One of the best pieces of information I got when I got this job was lawyers are just hourly employees.
They're a necessity.
Very, very expensive.
Okay, approval of personal services contract with Gunner, Gunner Guderson, Guderson?
We are contracting Gunner, Gunner, Guderson is a trainer in the self ID. Um, our priority next year, and we've been very clear on this, is we're getting ready to shift to twenty four, twenty five is instruction. Our priority is instruction. For hard learning targets, core outcomes, updated materials. And then next year is really working with our administrative team on teacher evaluation, but not so much evaluation as much as teacher coaching. How can we as an administrative team be instructional leaders to support our teachers on with data, with student achievement, with tools to put in their toolbox? So Gunner is a self ID trainer. We are contracting him on, uh, for this month to do two days of self ID training with our administrative team on how the teacher evaluation process should be used as coaching tool. And then we'll have him contracted for two days in next year. We're in the middle of the teacher evaluations to kind of come back and really work on that coaching. So that's where we will be Tuesday and Wednesday next week. Our administrative team will be in this room. On self ID. Self ID is our teacher evaluation tool that we use.
I'll move for the approval of personal services contract with Gunner Guderson.
I'll second that. I think you should have to say it too.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent report.
Um, I actually brought these in, but then the topic came up earlier, but I just really want to thank, uh, Mr. Keating. Um, our office has been packed. Packed full boxes. Um, as Mark has been delivering all of the new materials, I think our teachers have felt like it is Christmas. Our last, most recent outside of Ready Math, because Mark led a Ready Math adoption as principal of the elementary school, I think was a history book in two thousand and four. Does send the right, my right mark? So. Um, we have updated math, updated E L A, standards aligned materials. Mark has trainings all set up. Our summer institute, that very first Tuesday at Summer Institute is committed to teachers getting training on their new instructional materials. And our teachers have worked hard on mapping out, identifying and knowing every learning outcome kindergarten through fourth grade that we want our students to know. This is a great example of what our, um, kindergarten, uh, second grade, first grade. Then this is really coming out, this comes up tomorrow, I think, I guess. I know. Um, I know we were sending these home, so I was over at the eighth grade graduation day, so I ordered promotion. Uh, but we actually built activity books internally that are aligned to all of our standards. So then that way, there's no guessing for our parents and our families on what students would need to know as they're moving up. So there's all kinds of activities that are aligned to the most essential standards and skills you would need to know as you enter the next grade level. And these were all made in partnership with Heather Moore and Barbara Snyder. And I just didn't know that we have a clear, easy way to communicate with our families and a way to access all of our families. Um, we're just proud that we are standards aligned, updated materials. We really do want to be the highest academic achieving district. And I think we have the pieces in place. It's now just to put it, put it all into motion. But I want to, I can't appreciate Mark enough. Um, again. Mark knows I appreciate him, but just getting materials and alignment, I feel that Mark has really been kind of the cornerstone of having these pieces in place. Training actually starts Friday and Monday. And then materials, yeah.
We'll steam ahead.
Sorry.
Sorry.
This is the cutest little baby eagle.
I know, I pointed out, it's like, and it's in the corner of, if you go, flip the pages open, at the top. There, yeah, keep going. Yeah, there in each part of the names.
What do we call them? Eagle what? Sure. Okay. All right, wow. Really?
Well, we have thirty minutes of executive session.
All right, well, we're going to move into thirty minutes of executive sessions, um, for collective bargaining. No action will be taken. Have a great day tomorrow, everyone.